Our sponsors for this episode are Gambino's Pizza in Newton. Gambino's Pizza in Newton is located at 1029 Washington Road in Cedar Village. They're open seven days a week, 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. If you love pizza as much as I do, you know that you always have time and room for pizza. Not only can you dine in or carry out, but they have a huge menu of items to pick from, including wings, pizzas, salad bar, and not only that, but they have the only pizza buffet in Newton. If you're looking for a family-friendly environment or just need to stop in for a quick lunch over the noon hour, Gambino's has got you covered. Visit Gambino's Pizza in Newton at 1029 Washington Road in Cedar Village, or give them a call at 316-866-1778. That's 316-866-1778 to order out or ask questions. You can even order online. Look them up on Facebook, give them a like, follow, and a share. Gambino's Pizza in Newton. Carlos's Kitchen and Caterer. Carlos's Kitchen and Caterer located at 114 South Kansas Avenue in Newton is one of Newton's best-kept secrets. Or maybe you know about them and have already stopped in or carried out some of the most delicious Mexican food in our region. If you're just hearing about them, you need to give them a try. If you're a repeat customer, you'll already know why. Give Carlos's Kitchen and Caterer a call at 316-804-0158. That's 316-804-0158. Or you can stop into 114, that's 114 South Kansas Avenue. Make sure to look them up on Facebook, give them a like, follow, and share. And don't forget, folks, tell your friends. Carlos's Kitchen and Caterer. The Newton Kansan is Newton's longest-running local newspaper covering all the stories, people, places, and things happening in our community. Chad Frye, the Kansan Guy, editor of the Kansan, works diligently to ensure integrity, accuracy, and unbiased news is delivered to your doorstep three times a week for an unbeatable price. You can also sign up for online-only access for around $7 a month. That's 12 online papers a month for only $7. If you've not subscribed, it's time you do. Visit them in their office at 517 North Main Street. That's 517 North Main Street in Newton. Online at thekansan.com. That's thekansan.com. Or give them a call at 316-283-1500. That's 316-283-1500. Support local, support local journalism, support the Kansan. Well, hello everybody, and welcome to this HC Talk Podcast. As always, I'm your host Lance Gormly, and my two co-partners in crime are Andy Ortiz, local entrepreneur and businessman, and we can no longer give you the title of USD 373, USD 373 School Board Member. So we will move on from that. Thank you for your service, Andy. Appreciate you. It is not easy in any way, shape, or form to be in the political realm at all, and you're pissing one side off or the other, no matter what you do, how you do it, or why you do it. And then we have Chad Frye, the Kansan Guy, editor of the Kansan Paper. How are you doing today, Chad? How are you doing today, Andy?
I'm a little tired because I haven't, what's today? Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
It's Monday. And the last time I slept was Monday, so I'm a little tired, but that's, it's okay. It's all right.
And so you are bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. I am full of all these little like sayings, you know that, right, Chad?
Oh, of course.
Bright-eyed, bushy-tail, and full of life and joy and fun and ready for the day, the Monday, to get Monday up on and over with, right, Chad?
Sure.
Okay, Andy, how are you doing today, Andy?
I'm doing really well. Yeah, just working through stuff and one day at a time, right?
Yeah.
So I'm doing good. Glad to be here with you guys and looking forward to the crazy we get into today. I will say our last topics, I thought were maybe spicy for a lot of people, but we got one of the best podcasts we've ever done, I think, numbers-wise on this last one. Am I not mistaken?
There was a lot of people engaging. There was a lot of people saying, hey, we appreciate you talking about this. There were people that could see it on both sides, right? So as far as like some of our platforms, and this is, and I could, we could get into a little bit of this, right? Because this was one of the things that I was thinking about for my national topic today, and I think you just, I didn't really know if I wanted to bring it up or not, because it's very difficult to navigate these conversations without people thinking you're insulting them. And that's not my goal, is to insult people. But speaking of this, we get astronomical views when it comes to shorts or clips. And if people don't know what shorts or clips are, it's, it's video content that's put out that's less than a minute. Okay? Now, I don't know where we went in society.
Saw one of those of me this last week, and I went, boy, I was intense.
Yeah.
I was pretty, I was just intense.
Yeah, well, and you know, interestingly enough,
You know?
It's, it's intensity and emotion that generally resonates with people, and they pick up on that, right? That's one. Two, somehow we've devolved ourselves in society into being a soundbite society. It's like we're trained as, you know, like, I don't watch the full podcast, but I did watch all of these one-minute clips, because I guess that's all I have time for. So, you know, it's very easy for someone to project onto that, which then leads to more engagement. What he said, what he said, well, do you know what he said? I mean, you're only taking a minute out of context.
Well, you know, I watched that clip, and I was like, man, I'm intense. And then I, and then I watched it again, and I went, that guy hates health insurance as much as I do. I think I'm gonna write him in in the next election.
Yes, damn health insurance, right? Hey, we had, there was a lot of people that really obviously are struggling with this.
Oh, yeah.
This is not anything new to anybody.
You know, we, I just got done writing a story about somebody.
Read that.
That, I mean, I, I don't know if I'd have been strong enough to get through it the way she did. To have a doctor look at you and go, cancer, and you're sitting there with no health insurance of any kind. I mean, I couldn't have done it. And, and then to have a surgeon look at you and say, yeah, we can do the surgery, and we can take care of this. It'll be five grand, paid in advance, please. I know I wouldn't have got through that without decking somebody.
Don't I tell you?
And so, you know, that, that, that story was, I mean, that's why I did this story, is that, that this is somebody from our hometown that faced this thing, and it, and it's real. This was not, and, and the reason she didn't have health insurance, she couldn't afford it.
Yeah, it's a lot of people.
She couldn't afford it. And, and I just saw the bill go through on my single insurance plan for me that I, that I got through my employer. And because of the way they structured our health insurance this year, I know exactly what my premium is. And the plan that I am on is a $3,000 deductible. Once I hit 3,000 paid, the insurance will pay 30% of whatever costs have occurred until I get to $8,500. And once I get to $8,500, then they'll cover it 100%. For that, for that insurance, single human being, non-smoker, $1,008 a month. Whoa.
You know, okay, I'll go to, 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 yeah.
And there's no way I could have done that without help with, from my employer.
I had some people reach out, okay? And they wanted to know like the specifics of my situation. So, so I'm just gonna tell the audience, you know, I had mentioned last week on the program that I had a situation that took place with me, a medical situation, and wiped me out completely. And this is what happened. I had went from one job to another job. So I'd only been at the other job for probably around 90 days, four months, okay? That means you don't get FMLA, and generally speaking, that means that you're not to the threshold necessary in order to get insurance, because you have to be working for a company for a period of time. So I, being a middle-aged male and good health, thinking that everything was good, fine, and dandy, all right? Made that transition, knowing I was taking the gamble. Blacked out, had no idea, obviously woke up in a hospital for them to tell me that I had a tumor in the middle of my brain. And then I had no insurance, I had no way to pay for it, I had nothing. Because it was life-saving treatment, they went ahead and did it, okay? And lucky me, I'm still here. The rest of the world, lucky you, I'm still here, obviously. Half, half of the people, half the people, and those that make up things about me.
Maybe 70% in your case.
Which one of us is the lucky one and which one is the?
Yeah, yeah. We'll never know.
One of us is only half there, one of us is not, you know?
One of you guys is 30% lucky, and the other one's 70%, but that's, that we, those are private conversations that we have that you all don't know about. So, but you know, it's just, just that situation with me, right? Then I had somebody that wanted to get to a tit-for-tat specifically on my statement that I made about how basically chip for, for any child that's from zero, zero to 18, zero to 18. Because I'm focusing on, focusing on kids, okay? Just kids, adults are adults, kids are kids. And, well, their response was is, well, they're just the government to pay for everything, and why would I have to pay for, for your kid or anybody's kids? And then I just laid it out. I was like, how many times do we pay taxes for first responders that, that, I mean, do you have?
What is the profile of the person that asked the question?
That's difficult, because when you actually go to look at the profile of the person, like many cases now today, it's all locked down.
Yeah, and so it's a pansy that's just out there. Because a lot of times, and this is the thing that freaks me out, right? Some of the worst and biggest pushback I get from people or that I've gotten are people that are bashing, let's just say, the school bond.
Yeah, well, you transition into item number three.
If we can want to, but, but then I find out, or the reality is, is that same person works for the government for their whole life.
Yeah, yeah, I'm against unions, but I'm on union retirement right now. Yeah!
The government is sending him a check every month.
That makes total sense.
And a guy like me, you know, a private equity guy, completely private, right? It's like, dude, like, you're acting like you're in my world.
Yeah.
And honestly, like social security and all these other things, I'm never gonna see that.
No.
And I'm paying into that for the greater good of the whole, as we talked about last time. And that's just my sacrifice to our countrymen. And I'm hoping that we get smarter by the time it's time for me to be old, and maybe the kids underneath us will figure out how to take care of us to those of us that need it.
Yeah.
Right? My job is to try not to get on the wagon, as Val Gleason would say, right? Pull the wagon. But some people aren't that fortunate, and life happens, and some people need to be on that thing, but I want to be pulling that sled. And that's okay, that's a choice we get in this country. But our countrymen are important, and sometimes paying it forward, I think all the time in my life, it always pans out, right? You can't outgive God, as they say.
Yeah.
And at the end of the day, you know, you look at these situations, and you're going, dude, you're the biggest basher of taxes, and you're living off of it.
Yeah.
It's so wild to me.
Right, and it goes back to, it goes back to this. I say it again and again and again, okay? So every road that you pay taxes to maintain, you drive on, right? No, okay? So, so you pay for taxes for roads that you don't necessarily drive on. You pay for services that you don't necessarily need. You pay for parks that you don't necessarily go to. You pay for, you pay for, you pay for. So why is it that all of a sudden, we as a society have turned a corner and said, well, I don't want to pay for anything but the road. I don't want the government to do anything with tax dollars except for what benefits me. And I don't want to pay taxes for anything except for what benefits me. And I'll say, oh, I was, this is where this is how I was having a difficult moment, because I know I'm gonna make some people mad here, okay? But we often hear of the greatest generation, right? The greatest generation, those that went to World War II, those that we call them the greatest generation, right?
Storm the beaches of Normandy.
Storm the beaches of Normandy. Did they do that because, you know, they wanted to, not necessarily, obviously, you know? But, but it was a, it was a time in which the majority of people in America specifically were about America, us as a whole, us as a nation, us as a country. That's how we get into these entitlements, right? So, so pay the social security so people that are older can, can, when they go retire, okay? But then, and this is where I'm gonna get in trouble. It seems as though this generation, that's the product, we'll call them the baby boomers, they seem to be the most vocal about the fact that they don't want to pay for a school bond, let's say, or they don't want for this or that, they don't want their taxes raised, they don't want this, they don't want this, they, 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 it's almost like they benefited from a system, and now that it's time for somebody else to benefit from the same system, they want to slam the door shut, and they don't want it to take place.
Well, and what, let's go cause and effect. I hear you, and I think you're right, but we also got to speak to why they're in that position, right? And, and my mom would be one of those people. And so I can see that clearly, and I humanize it, so then it, it'll help my, me take it differently, because my mom is one of the people that's getting benefited from the extra work that I get to do and pour back into the system, right? The things that I'm not gonna get, as we speak, spoke about social security, right? Okay, so that group of people went into a world where social security was created, right? And it was created for just a small amount of people, and life expectancy wasn't what it is today. And most people, the small amount of people that were on that, were only supposed to be on it three or four years before they pass, right? And so you got this whole culture and the whole deal where the whole bunch of people were paying in just for a little bit, and then the baby boomers were born, and you got this whole transition of people, and then that fund was also bastardized to be used for other things. So that got some nuance to it, right? Because that's what happens with big government. And at the end of the day, you've got these people that are counting on social security for retirement, because they've paid in so much, and they did pay in their whole lives.
Whole life.
And now they're like expecting to retire on this, and a lot of them had to use everything they had to get by. And so that's their only source of retirement, when it says, this is not your source of retirement on the piece of paper, but it, but it is what it is. And there's so many people that are blind that we're not gonna have it. We here at the table will not benefit from that. I think it's like four or five more years left before it's done.
Yeah, or they bump it up so high that we'll be dead before we're.
Yeah, I mean, you have to change the numbers to make it work.
So I'm the oldest guy at the table, and for me, they'd already, they've already bumped it for me. And my life expectancy, sorry, I'll be, I'll be dead.
Well, and here's the thing.
I'll be dead. And here's the, here's the thing that drives me nuts about that, even if they figure out a way to save this thing. Even if they figure that out.
I hope they don't, personally, but.
Well, here's the deal. This is the brass tacks of the reality, the situation of Chad, okay? Even if they figure out a way to save it, my life expectancy, I've sat down and I've done it, okay? And, and I'm not talking about estimating based on age or anything like that. I've done a full health assessment. With my life expectancy, I will never collect social security, even if they figure out how to save it. And that also means that my wife will never benefit.
What just bothered your biggest concern is your wife and your kids?
That is my biggest concern. My wife and kids are always my biggest concern, okay? I mean, it's, it's why I selected the health insurance that I selected. The reason that I know that it's $1,008 is because my employer announced that they were going to chip 100, or $1,010 in to pay for health insurance for each employee. So I pay, I picked a plan that, that my premium will be paid for by my employer. There will be no deduction from my check. And the reason I did that is that my wife, her health insurance premiums, when I say skyrocket, oh, yeah, it skyrocketed. We're paying almost 10 times more than we paid last year. But I have to pay that premium. And the only way I could pay that premium is to not pay a premium on me. My choice was to either select something that my, my employer would pay the whole dime or nothing, because I have to have insurance for my wife. I just, I have to. And, and even, even what we are, with what we're paying 10 times more, anything, anything remotely goes wrong, we're bankrupt. I mean, that's just the, it's the reality of the situation.
So if everybody's struggling is what you're talking about, Chad.
And, and so, and the, and the baby boomers, not to the degree that us Gen Xers, by the way, were your kids, all right? Have, have gone through this, but they've been front row and center for all of these decades and all of these years where inflation, and there's, there's the inflation rate, but there's true inflation, because the inflation rate doesn't factor in things like insurance premiums. They have sat and watched as that inflation and participated in a system has outpaced wage growth.
Exponentially.
For decades, decades. And if y'all don't think that's gonna catch up to us, change your thinking.
You take, you take a 30-year span, right? And if the average COLA, I think is what they call it nowadays, is, let's just say 2.3%, right? And inflation's averaged 3, 3.5% over the last 30 years. Well, you've lost 30% right there over 30 years, and that's why you took one breadwinner to send, to live less of a lifestyle of two breadwinners today than it did even 30, 35 years ago.
Right.
And so, yeah, you get these formulas, and they just don't work long-term. And now you see these guys like Dell, who's putting in $200 as a pilot into funds for kids, underprivileged kiddos, right? And they're gonna try to reinvent that system in a different way. And I see what they're doing. I don't know if it's gonna take hold, and I hope it does, because that's the theory of putting it into the private world, right? Into mutual funds and stocks and bonds and things. And we know what the market's done for 100 years, right? So you have a good idea of what independent wealth would look like if you started it earlier, and you get the power of compounding, and it also helps the markets, right? And gets the money out of the government sector and into the private market to use. Now, that also can be churned and manipulated, and vultures are gonna get in there and do what they do, just like all the fraud, and I hope we talk about some of that today, because that's one of the things I want to talk about, is the fraud in Minnesota. Then we just look past what happened in Kansas during COVID, right? We want to look at everybody else. It's like a billion-dollar fraud. Yeah, that's a big deal, and it sucks. But what about the hundreds of millions of dollars that got stolen from Kansas, right? And where's our accountability in our own backyard? But we want to look at somebody else, and just because it's a political narrative, we want to bash everybody else. And it's like, well, hold on, guys, yeah, that's not a good thing, but let's back up and just look at our own stuff. And how did, how did that happen here? And if we want accountability over there because of political beliefs, what about accountability in our own backyard?
Oh, no, 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 no. We can't do that, Andy. We can't do that.
I'm not gonna ban people from coming on our podcast.
We are right, we are right, and they are wrong. And as long as you're looking at how they're wrong, then you don't look. It's like that whole clean up your own backyard before, yeah.
My bad, let me put my muzzle back on.
Yeah, 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 stop, stop now, okay? Well, you guys will most be comforted to know that I just Googled, how much money do we send overseas, right? We're talking about how, like, I'm a person that really believes in America-first policy. I think we can turn this.
Can I shoot a number out before you say it?
Yes.
My estimate's $3 trillion?
Well, because of AI. Well, right now it says foreign aid. So you remember, you have to talk, it becomes, it becomes what the definition of foreign aid is.
No, so we want to play that game.
Because then it could wind up being, well, how much money have we spent militarily?
So the World Health Organization may be a gray space for foreign aid, because it's kind of an American thing, but then kind of not.
Yes, because I was thinking, okay, so if we, if we have about $1.6 trillion annually to support social security benefits, okay, that's what, that's what it is. About 1.6 trillion annually goes out as we speak to support people who have social security or SSDI, whatever it is, okay? So in 2023, it says the US government dispersed $71.9 billion in foreign aid. And then in 2022, it was $74 billion in, in fiscal year 2022. So, I said that right, but anyway, so I think that if I had more time to research this, it would be a huge number. I mean, when you think about what it talks just to move our military.
Like 50 billion to like Ukraine not too long ago?
Yeah.
How does that make sense?
Uh, because, well, it's, it's breaking it down.
Oh.
Yeah.
That is military aid.
Yeah, military aid.
That's another budget.
Hey, yeah, yeah, that's something else.
Yeah, Mr. School Board, that's a different budget.
Well, when you think, when you think about it. And I go, and I go back to this, where is our America-first policy? I mean, we, we talk about the insurance situation that we have stimulating our own economy. We had talked about how much money it costs to support, you know, social security. But at the same time, I don't know if it's that America has such a problem generating revenue, it's how we spend the revenue that's the issue, right? Absolutely, oh, you guys are Googling stuff now, oh, God, I got it open. But, okay, let's go back to this. Small potato, small town, our situation, how we spend money, people wanting to invest in the system. Let's just briefly, because I'm sure we're gonna cover it more in the future, the school bond situation.
Open it up.
We're talking about a $50 million, this is my opinion, $50 million school bond. And if you really look at what the school bond is going to be spending money on, we're not talking about a frivolous deal here.
No, we're not.
We're talking about specifically, they should call it, and I think they are calling it, an infrastructure improvement bond, because that's what it is. So if we don't do this, okay? I mean, I hate to be a doomsayer, but the consequences to that are gonna be horrible. It's gonna be horrible. And you got people sitting here going, I'm not, I shouldn't have to pay an extra $3 a month on, on this. Oh, $6, if it's $100,000, you got a property homeowner, $100,000 value on your home, you're looking at three, like $3 and roughly $3.50 per month. If you're a $200,000, double that, you're looking at $7 a month.
And so I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to make somewhere between one and two extra DoorDash deliveries a month to cover that. Now, I'm not unsympathetic, because I, I took a really hard look at my mortgage this last couple of weeks, really hard. And the good news is, I'm very close to paid off, right? A no-interest mortgage is awesome. That's what I have. The bad news is that as I sit here today, taxes and insurance going into my escrow account on a monthly basis is more than my actual mortgage payment. So I'm not unsympathetic to people when they want to complain about the property taxes. Seriously, I'm not. Because that, quite honestly, is pretty ridiculous.
I would love to show you ours.
I was gonna say, I wonder what Andy's bill is like. It's probably close to what some people pay in a house payment.
It's not, it's not nothing.
Yeah.
Right? And this is where you gotta, you take it on the chin, and sometimes you get those echo chambers when you're listening, and, and it's not, not real, right?
Right.
These are real issues for most people, including myself. When you look at that, you're going, oh, my gosh. Somebody said in a forum, one of our representatives, Senator Owens, I think it's, you do the math, it was like 30% increase in six years?
Yes.
10% is a lot. If I can up a business that we're a part of right now by 10%, I did a really good job.
Every year.
And that's 30%. Now, I do understand the situation and why, and I know what our leaders were involved with, with not being able to pay our people and people plucking from other surrounding communities, and I get the whole game, right? But at the end of the day, win is win, and what's gonna end up happening? And this is not me being ugly or threatening or any of that stuff, because people don't know how to take this kind of talk, but organizations innovate. Communities are getting pissed, and staff will be reduced with technology. They're gonna have to make it work. They're gonna figure it out. Eventually, you're gonna get stubborn people in there, like myself, where they're gonna say, turn off your feelings and get the job done, and what do we need to do? And they're gonna implement for AI pieces that do positions that we're paying 60, 70, 80, 90, $100,000 for. And they'll probably actually end up doing it better once they're trained after two years than the people there. And I'm not trying to be ugly, it's just the reality of it. Accounting is gone. That's a dinosaur already. The fact that people are still doing it, it's like, there's people still watching cable TV. Y'all know that, right?
Yeah.
Like, wow. Like, I haven't touched cable TV in over 15 years.
I try not to.
But it's out there, and you see people that are doing it, and you're going, and then that just says so much about their echo chamber, what channels they're watching. You can almost tell their political ideology just by the way they have their, their life set up, because you know what's coming through to them.
Yes. Here's the, here's a true statement. I can sit at a table in the middle of my church during a meal.
of my church during a meal. Okay. I can, if I sit alone and I can listen to all the tables around me. And I can listen to the conversations and with great accuracy, I can go MSNBC. Fox News, CNN.
The echo chambers. So all that to be said is us as a community, right? We are literally slow in this part of the country to change. But I have friends running businesses and I get to do business in most states. Um, that are teaching me stuff that they're doing that blows my mind. And then I'm implementing them and I'm about putting myself out of a job for my marketing stuff. Which is great because in my life I get to reposition that time to do something different. Uh, but in other people's lives, that might not be so good because that's their literally only job.
Yeah.
And so when you have this going on, you have a threat to the way of life today. And you have people that have real lives that these are their real jobs and they do not want to look at how they put themselves out of work because it doesn't benefit them because they have no interest in that. And companies are figuring that out. And unfortunately there's hard conversations happening in two of the companies I'm a part of right now. Um, on some of the positions there and why we really don't need them because what used to take a week and a half takes a system two minutes. And it's real and it's accurate and it's done really well. And, and there are some things that just don't math out yet. But trust me, it's on the way.
Well, it's moving fast. I mean, like for instance, if people, I, I want you to hear this, okay? We could literally, we could, I could, okay? By myself, single-handedly use AI technology to put on a full 30 minute, what would appear to be cable news network. Production and literally have the anchor who's an AI generated, which you probably almost couldn't tell. The full-on background, all AI generated, which you almost couldn't even tell. And then all I'd have to do, quite literally, is subscribe to the two papers that are here in the community. Copy and paste every article that I thought.
Give the news.
Throw it in there. In a matter of an hour, it will generate a full-on 30-minute news production just like you would see on cake or KWC H. And it wouldn't cost me a dime.
So let's take this back to a real personal thing. So our viewers can see what I'm talking about even here at this table. Cause we've got plans and we're working on some stuff and timing is important, but I've been able to sit with you Lance and shared a couple of tools. How much time do those tools save you?
Oh my God.
Just an estimate, a week, just go on a weekly basis.
Okay. So when I first started out, I would say put in 40 hours. Uh, today I put in three.
So can you imagine that at scale in the government?
Oh yeah. I mean.
And so when people say there's no way, oh, trust me, there's a way. But when you're in certain institutions and certain systems and you're not incentivized to find that way. Um, yeah, you're going to be a little more slow to get there because of some of the dynamics I've been speaking about, right? And there's layers in there, but at the end of the day, we, we're going to figure it out. We have to, the world's going to change. And I would just encourage people, um, and personality types are some that are going to really struggle. And that's why I worry about mental health. Um, people, some people aren't built for what's coming.
To adapt, innovate and change.
You know, the, the difficult thing that we're going to have to deal with with this disruption is how are people going to survive? How are they going to feed themselves?
Eight years ago, when I was going to school and then through the entire time I was going to school, they were talking about a standardized wage. Okay. And everybody is against some sort of standardized wages. But one of the things that was discussed was if we have AI technology in the future says that 50 to 60, maybe even upwards of 70% of people's jobs will no longer exist based upon AI being able to do it because AI is sentient. And AI can learn how to do things. They taught AI how to be sentient. Okay. Therefore it's not AI. I want you to do this job. I'm going to program you to do this job. And this is the only job you're going to do. They made AI in a way in which it's able to do multiple jobs. Be able to correct itself, be able to change everything about what it's doing and learn and just continue on this learning process. So now AI is generating, what do you got there, Andy?
These are my employees.
Yeah. AI bots.
Yeah. Do you want to see my marketing person that'll blow you out of the water? Her name is Sophie. And if I go to our schedules, she's got a schedule ready for me today. And she created this and it's ready to post. All I have to do is hit schedule after I read it.
Just, uh, just take, just takes all of the information, figures it out and then.
She's got the posts, the transcripts, the hashtags. She's looked at all my competitors within a hundred mile radius because that's what she was, and she knows my business model and how I'm attacking the business model. And she's reverse engineered all the algorithms that every competitor that's even not in my space, that's in the same space, which would be tunnel car washes, just to be frank on this situation. And then they looked at self-serve car washes and they're also pinging people who have been in those businesses for a while, who might be looking to sell.
Yeah.
And getting in their algorithm. So they see our brand and we got a better chance to get a call from them to see if we can make that meeting happen, acquire that location. On top of all the rest of it. Cause she also is talking to my business manager. Gathering data who is right here. And they're all talking and they work 24/7, 365.
Yeah.
On trying to help me meet my goals. I've got 12 employees that work 24/7, 365.
Or just sit down with like.
I need a day trading bot, man.
Okay. And here's another one. Here's another one.
I know they're out there.
Here's another one.
Some of them are doing better than Pelosi now.
Well, I, I need one of those. I mean.
Isn't that sick?
Yeah. Well, like, like even.
Cause I've, I've been doing everything I can to make money and I can't get her done.
And you know, they talk about like, for instance, Chad, okay, for instance, for instance, Chad's shop, okay? Where, uh, right now Chad has to go to a city commission meeting, watch a city commission meeting and then decide what's going to be in the paper and what's not about the city commissioning. Let's just talk.
We already have an AI tool within Cherry Road.
Yeah. Because what, but.
And what that AI tool, it, the way it's set up.
Now we have competitors that watch this, so be careful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we do have competitors that watch. And you know, when I, when I make that statement, I know that there's people that are going to be like, oh my gosh, I don't know. So relax everybody. I refuse to use this one. And there's a reason I'm refusing to use it. And when I tell you what it does, I think you'll figure out why I refuse to use it. The way that thing is set up is I can go, I would, if I go to that meeting, I go, would go back to, I'd go to the tool and just list facts. And then I would tell it to write a story. And the other thing that it's doing, and this is, this is why I refuse to use it. I can designate a, a website or I can designate a reporter and editor from our company. And it will write in their style.
Isn't that amazing?
So I could, I could, I could sit there and list out the facts and tell it, write it like I would. I don't see the point in doing that. So I don't do that.
But that would save you hours upon hours.
Well, here's the thing. Not really because what it doesn't do is it doesn't watch the meeting and grab quotes.
Good call. But it could.
It could.
So you have enough history and enough production. And these things have brains and they learn. So let's just use a, a different industry. So we're not getting in our feelings too much on what's in front of us here, which we should do that sometime. It's a good exercise. It's uncomfortable, but it's good. Putting yourself out of job is never fun. Um, unless you're in the private equity side of things. And so again, there's perspective, right? Where are we going to fit? I have a friend who has been a photographer who's amazing at what she does. There's a tool where she can put 10 years of her photos in there. And it will, instead of having to edit after a wedding, you just dump the photos in there. And it adds exactly to the style that she's created. And the more time and more photos you give it, the better it gets at recreating your.
Oh, and you know what? That's, that technology, that's 15 years old already.
Yeah. And then the pictures, like in photography, the pictures that you take, that might take you two hours, three hours, whatever for to do the shoot. But then going back and editing all of that would take you a tremendous amount of time. And alls you have to do is drag, click and it thinks, and then all of a sudden bam, the editing is done.
Adobe, back in the day, when you used to have to download it on your computer and you would get two licenses for your computer. And you would open it and have all these tools and all these headers. And it was like a little T, right? Little box and a big old white blank sheet of go create. And we used to know that when you hire people that come in and you're interviewing people, designers in particular in this situation. The ones that had a notepad and a pen were the ones you really wanted to look for. We didn't say that of course, but we knew internally that's kind of the beginning of a good designer, right? Cause people would go online at that time. They started taking and stealing and messing and manipulating other images that were already on the web. And then you create your own stuff. Okay. Then that tool, if you look at that same type of situation today, they not only got it to where it's like almost ready for you to go, other than clicking and pushing a few buttons for the novice people. The person who started out with the thing that would take them three days to design for the initial revision. Though they will complain about the new system that exists today that allows somebody to do eight designs in a day. Um, because they don't like how it's been set up and how easy it is. Now the only thing that makes sense to me when I go through that exercise is, is there's a threat there. And how do we internally look at that threat and objectively like the state of Kansas and how they would get pissed off if Newton did something different? The board at, at the state level would get real or herky-jerky because there's a money system and there, if you have results that look better than what you're getting fed, that should give you results. And you start producing, there's a lot of people over here that aren't going to like that. And trust me, there, there's going to be hell to pay for that.
Are you hinting around on the pilot project there?
I'm very much hitting around about that. And the threats that I see coming at us.
I'm, I'm going to be writing it. I'm going to be writing that up this afternoon or tomorrow.
And I hinted at it at the meeting. Did you catch on that?
Yeah.
I was hinting at the levels and the layers at the state level and how they would come down. And that's why we have to have top cover to hold people accountable to say, do you really want this to get better? Or do you like the way things are going? Because it keeps things copacetic and it keeps the same arguments going. So people can keep the same positions and the same cash flow. And why would you want to reduce when it threatens your way of life at the state level where the big money is? Does that make sense?
Oh yeah.
And so this is even at our level, we have this issue. I have this issue. So do how, who am I to think that that level is not passed on to everybody else in our system? Until we choose to get uncomfortable and get real about the possibilities, not the challenges, because what you focus on grows. We're going to be in trouble. Not all of us. Cause I'm through that gate for me, right? I'm like, and I'm working with my kids to the best of my ability because I'm still learning. And I'm pushing through my own indiscretions and my own faults and my own ego. But at the end of the day, I continue to be humbled going, oh my gosh, everything's here for us to build and innovate and make things better. You just have to be open to it. And there's a lot of people that aren't, more people than not. I'll just say that.
Well, and let's even go here. Okay.
Because people are trying to survive.
So we're talking about technology. We're talking about AI.
Not everybody can walk in and win the lottery and have their woes go away overnight.
Yeah.
That's why we're all clinging so hard to whatever job it is we have.
Yeah. Because then when you get out in the workforce, so, so something that, that I think is interesting is this is old technology, right? But like when you, uh, we'll just talk about the education realm, because I have taught college classes before and whatnot. Um, something that is utilized at that level is a program called Panopto, or maybe even like Zoom, things like this, right? You can literally, literally, okay? Instead of a teacher having to go in and teach class after class, after class, after class, after class, be present, be physical. You go online, I can one time teach a class for a semester, right? And have it all recorded. Okay. Each section recorded, section one, two, three, four, you know, for however many weeks, whatever the case may be. And after I do that, I don't even have to be present. It's just uploaded. So then they clock into this link. So where a, a teacher would have to go in one individual time, every single time and be on that, I can create a class that class is there. And then it becomes a class that then just uploads, uploads, uploads. So that all that time of lecture and everything, once it's recorded once, then becomes the source in which people can access. And, but that takes that teacher out. So when we're talking about, I mean, everything is changing.
You just described.
Everything is changing.
You just described Coursera, which is the number one, the number one provider for me anyway, for continuing ed credit for community corrections and juvenile intake. Because they have all kinds of psychology courses and whatever else on there. And when I'm needing hours. And you know what? And in that case, because I'm just needing education hours, I don't need to necessarily complete a course. I just need to log the hours.
Yeah.
I don't even have to finish stuff.
Watching lectures.
And, and there's one class that I've been taking for three years. I do my 10 hours that I'm required to do. And then I stop and a year later I come back and I'm like, oh, there's still some. There's still, there's still some stuff left in this one.
They call them modules. Yeah. Yeah. It's amazing. I mean, it, it almost will leave people speechless. And, and I've been watching, oh goodness, there's a podcast, uh, individual that I watch, I wish right now would come to mind and it's not coming to mind. So maybe I'll look it up when we have a chance. But, uh, the last few, uh, podcasts that I've watched from him have been with tech, about technology and AI and what AI is going to do, the potential for what AI can do, what it is doing. And what the future looks like. And for people that can't wrap their head around it, uh, it's mind blowing, man. The whole thing is just absolutely.
Different in 10 years and that ship has sailed.
Yes.
I mean, that's where the principles and preferences become real important. Those conversations to focus on your family, focus on the kneecap to kneecap. These are our community. What are we going to do? How are we going to adjust? Because I will tell you that it's going to look different in Kansas than it does in San Francisco and California, right? Newton, Kansas is going to be different than San Francisco, but what is that difference? And it's up to us to figure out what we're going to look like here at a local level. And utilize those technologies that benefit us in our community. And that's a big picture, right? Because our community really is beholden to our kiddos who are coming up underneath us, who are going to be building this world and living in it. So we got to empower them.
Yeah, absolutely. 100%. I don't know, guys. All I know is, is we could all be just sitting here left speechless at this point in time because I think, you know, for, for instance, I was.
Are we going to make anybody mad anywhere?
Are we trying to do that today? I mean, I could, I definitely could. I don't know. I definitely could. Okay. So did we, did we talk about the city commission meeting, guys?
I'm not sure I want to.
Oh, I, I, I I don't know if I would make any more enemies.
It's going to be, I, I think, I heard about it. I haven't seen it yet. I heard about it. I'm part of a, a group of people who just communicate. And, um, that the, the school system, I think most people are, are okay with that leadership team coming in and think we're going to be fine in. I actually think it's probably good that a couple more of us from all the trauma has been kind of pushed off. And, uh, that new group is coming in. I think they'll do great things. Um, I'm a little concerned about leadership with the bond at stake and all that. And what that I've said, what I've had to say publicly and openly and, and I was honest about what I, how I feel about that. Now what they choose to do is on them at this point. Um, and they have my little warning signs moving forward and my innuendo and, and suggestions without really giving them because it's not my place. Um, the city was the one I really worried about just because lack of involvement from some commissioners and attendance and things. And you know, when you put the D in the R and people get elected because of those reasons, it just mucks up the water. And granted, I'm going to do my job at making a point over these next two years on the next election. And I'm not backing down from that, but, but the big old but. What I heard on that text until I see it, you know, whatever, because people are still heightened emotional about our direction and worried that these people aren't going to be able to carry it through at the city level. And after some of what I've heard, I feel a little concerned more than I already did feel concerned, but.
So let me give you the thumbnail, the thumbnail sketch of the story I wrote about that commission meeting. This is sort of like, this is, this is Joe Friday. Here's the facts. Okay? For those of us who, um, pay attention to the commission and have watched the commission over time, we knew going into last night's meeting, for example, that Kathy Valentine was not gonna pursue becoming mayor.
Which would be the tradition.
Yes. She is, she was vice mayor for 2025. We knew because she had stated in a open meeting that she had every intention of nominating Rich Stennett for a second year.
Two times.
As mayor. She did not want to be mayor. She was comfortable. She enjoyed, she, she liked his leadership. And she wanted him to be mayor again. We knew, we've known this for several weeks.
That's cool dynamics, just saying, just given all the history of all that. That is really cool.
So that's what, that was the known. What was the unknown is the rest of what was going, went on during the reorganization. And Leroy Kane made a motion to have Kathy Valentine continue as vice mayor.
So we basically have the same mayor and vice mayor.
Exactly. Which is also a break from tradition. Now, understand, they are not, they're not breaking any rules.
They're not bound by anything.
They're not bound by any law. This is, the, the only thing that is binding here is tradition. And traditionally speaking, the vice mayor, which is an appoint, just like the mayorship, is appointed by the commission. Okay, folks, we do not elect a mayor or a vice mayor. The commission does it. They, and that is because these are figurehead positions. They have no additional power. That breaking of tradition became a flashpoint because the top vote getter in November was incumbent Melanie Watson. By tradition, she's in line to be the vice mayor. And she took exception to breaking from tradition. She made statements that I'm going to fight for my position. Okay. More power to you. Okay? And she also made statements like, I'm an open and honest person. So if there's issues, we're gonna talk about them and we're gonna talk about them now. And the issues that were brought forward by multiple commissioners is that during the last two years, she has been absent a lot.
Do you know the percentage of meetings?
I do not.
Could we get that information?
Well.
So we know like, hey, she was gone, like, it's not like three meetings, like people tried to say, I was never there and I missed like three or four meetings, right?
You'd have to go back through the minutes.
I would love to know the percentage of meetings.
And that would, that would give you, if you went back through the minutes, that would give you the times that she was absent from the commission meetings. It would not, there's also, there's also, um, uh, what do they call it?
Pre-meeting.
Yeah, there's a pre-meeting.
There's an agenda.
And an, an agenda meeting. There's, there's a couple other meetings that occur.
Not, not in the view of the public.
Right. Um, and, and those, like everything else, are heavily regulated. And, and that's an important point, is how heavily regulated this is. Because you cannot have more than two people from the commission talking about the commission unless it is a noticed public meeting. So when, when Leroy takes Melanie aside and says, hey, I've got this concern, and he voiced it during the meeting last night. And it was about, she's not, she wasn't present. The appearance was that she was not engaged. Um, you know, I had a different way of putting it to, to my friends when they were asking about it. I honestly believed, this is an opinion statement. I honestly, honestly believed what, what I was witnessing was someone who was being overwhelmed by the position.
Well, and then there was also some things that she had mentioned that she had.
And I never talked to her, so it's, it's not like, you know, that was a pure opinion statement.
She had a lot going on with her family.
Right.
So there were reasons that she gave.
That's came out last night, that, that, that there was, there were family needs. Um, and that she's got a full-time job that she can't just leave every all the time. And I identify with that. I understand all that. Okay, I get it. But at the end of the day, you still have this position on the city commission. And other commissioners were feeling that she wasn't present enough. And that's what led Leroy to make his motion. And it's what led to the better part of a 30 to 45 minute conversation.
It was, uh, if you start, if you go to look at the meeting started at seven minutes and it runs well past the 30 minute mark.
So is some of this just fumbling because of the new blood in there?
It's usually.
Now, that's a problem. And I hear just being blunt excuses because I know people that literally would travel back from being out of state and business to be at those meetings.
Yes.
Um, and I know people that flew on their own dollar to other places to recruit companies to this community for the city and for this area. Whether what, what, what's transpiring there or how that connected to another connection that led to another connection, whatever, right? But at the end of the day, we all have stuff in life, right? Um, and I have had excuses where I've missed some school board meetings, but more times than not, I was there.
It's, it's, it's.
So I, I have a hard time with that.
Here's an opinion statement again, but it's one thing to miss one or two meetings now and then.
Yeah, I did it.
It's another to be gone so much that other, other members of the board or commission are concerned.
Yeah, that's a problem.
It, it, it is. And, and um, I think it's also important to note, and, and, and I, and I wrote this quote this morning at about 5:45, because I thought it was important. That Melanie made the statement that Leroy's concerns are valid.
That's cool.
She owned it. She owned it.
That means something to me. Yeah. Good.
Yeah. And it means something, it should mean something to all of us.
Right.
That she sat there and she owned it. Now, there's some other things that got said.
To me, that says there's a path forward, honestly, when you own it like that.
Yes.
That's like, you're not just, you know, people that don't say sorry, I can't stand that. Wouldn't you, I mean, it doesn't fix everything. But it tells me you're at least engaging with the path forward.
Right. And, and so after what, 35 minutes or at least conversation, Leroy rescinded his motion. Kathy rescinded her second. Because it was obvious that they were not gonna get three votes in favor of that.
And let the politics play.
Exactly.
So it's three to two. It's gonna be a real hardcore left-leaning situation at this point in time.
It was a three, two vote to have, to, to make her vice mayor.
But this has nothing to do with politics, though.
I don't, if, okay, if I was to wa, okay, I watched it. I watched it.
She did. She, she was.
It's the bullshit.
Yes. She was the top vote getter and I get it.
Good job, Democrats.
Right?
Just wait for two years.
She was the top vote getter.
I'm playing shortstop like you've never seen before, baby.
But you know what? I'm gonna return to the fact that the only thing that was binding them on that was tradition.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. And I gotta, well, okay, so, so I, 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 I usually try to take, for instance, I, you know, we talked about at the very beginning and we are coming to the end of the program, but I had mentioned how, you know, we live in a soundbite society and people, because we're emotional creatures, we'll watch something that's a minute and will take some kind of an emotion out of that and will give an overarching belief on what that one minute was. And I'm somebody that likes to read the book all the way through. I'm the one that likes to.
I wrote a book on that meeting, so you can read the whole thing.
Well, okay. And so, so what I did was I watched that portion of the meeting twice. Um, and then the, the takeaway I had, and this is, this is just me, this is just my piece. Like, what did I take away from this? All the things I heard say, what, you know, I'm trying to take the inflection, all of it, right? And not project anything onto it. If this is the way that the commission is going to move going forward over the next two years, we're in trouble. And the second one is that there was so much, I, 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 me, I, and that whole thing. And anytime somebody was trying to interject, hey, this is us, this is us. It immediately got turned back around onto me, me, I, I, me, me, I, I. That's what I took away from it. That does not mean that was the case.
I would really encourage people to, to.
There's probably gonna be another email going out.
Yep.
About, don't, don't, don't do anything with Lance. My God, he's criticizing the city commission.
Too, it's okay.
Yeah, don't, you, you can't criticize anything going on with the commission.
Sit here and look at me in the face and say this isn't a political move. I mean, it's so bullshit. I mean, at the end of the day, come on, man. No, but come on.
You can't say that.
This is the problem.
Jason Miller can and did.
It, it's just ridiculous. At this point, it's get over.
And I like, but I'm gonna say, politic player himself.
In the interest.
Are you kidding?
I mean, of course. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the politics, but say I'm not playing the politics. Now I lost another friend.
The difference between me is, is I'm not gonna play weak.
So I wanna lighten the mood.
Let you know, we're gonna fight.
And I have a disclosure that needs to be made.
Oh, God. Oh, God. And Chad is saying this based upon his own opinion and not a reflection of the.
No, no, this is, what's coming out of my mouth is not an opinion statement. But I do wanna lighten the mood.
Yeah.
So in the interest of full disclosure, I wanna let everybody know that Jason Miller is my fifth cousin, once removed.
My blood is thicker than water.
Oh, yeah. Kudos to, he's, he's the one that did the work on that. I was like, because.
That Mennonite game goes deep.
I was like, somewhere we gotta be related. I, I made the statement, somewhere we gotta be related. And where it's at is my great, 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 great grandfather and his great, 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 great great, great grandfather, or something to that effect. Were cousins or something to that effect.
He used to live like 45 years.
So, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you gotta go way, way back, way, way back.
That's where they're living.
But you know what? We both got, and, and we both got Amish blood in us and we both got Hostetler blood in us.
Oh, no.
And so we, we, we both get to claim that birthright of, of, uh, you know, the Delaware Indians that attacked.
Disclosure. Yes. Okay, guys, we're coming to the end of the program. We gotta wrap it up. Final words?
Politics suck, but if that's the game we're gonna play, um, there's gonna be a statement in about two years from now. And hopefully that'll bring people to the table so we can have honest conversations on how to make this community better. Vino out.
Yeah. Chad?
Um, my final statement or my final word today is that, is that, uh, probably about two, maybe three years ago, I said to Rod Cry, I am so glad that I have a city commission that I feel like I can be proud of because I spent years feeling like I couldn't be. And after last night, the jury is extremely out as to whether I'll still be proud of our city commission for a while. It's gonna take some time to, to, to build up some pride because I, I, I just didn't like, I didn't like any of it. Okay? I didn't like any of it. I, I didn't like the move to put Kathy back in. And I didn't like the reaction. I didn't like any of it. So my final word is to this city commission that y'all take a real serious look at yourselves and understand that we, the people, want to be proud of you. And every move you make, you need to think about that.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Um, we have a really good staff.
Yeah.
And so hopefully they stay out of their way if they're gonna be crazy.
Yeah.
And I hope they're not, but I'm, I'm believing in operations underneath them. And I'm hopeful because I know that team has been stewarded and they're doing great things. And we got cranes going up and we've got land getting sold and we've got, you know, uh, a lot of things happening that are great things. I can go in there and get a permit now, sometimes within 24 to 48 hours, when it used to take like 30 days years ago. So there's a lot of great things happening. So I just don't, I'm not trying to talk trash on the staff.
No.
But leadership matters. It's public facing. You are the people at the cash register when people come into the store. I'm grateful for the people making the burgers because I know it's gonna be good at this point, but you can mess up the system and give a bad experience. Please don't do that.
Yeah. Well, there's so many of them are rock stars. They could go anywhere else they wanted to go and be occupied just fine. You know, so, okay. Um, I was gonna make a joke. So I, two-part day. Uh, recently, the, there's that new organization, Harvey County Republicans put on a forum, a preview, a legislative preview. It went very well. It was very well attended. If you get an opportunity to watch that, I think that's making a lot of people uncomfortable for some reason. Maybe not a lot of people, but specific people. And I would just say that, uh, you know, I, I, I went in there and wanted to be a part of what was going on and I was walking with open arms. And so I, I, I just, I think that they're wanting to be as inclusive and as possible with everybody. I, I got a sense of, um, yes, we're all Republicans, but we don't have to see everything eye to eye. We can all move together with respect and dignity for one another's beliefs and ideologies and, and, and we'll go with this. We'll, we'll come together and make this happen. And the other one is, you know, you hear a lot about the Irish or the, the Amish mafia, okay? In Kansas and Harvey County, beware of the Mennonite mafia. Have a good one, everybody.
We call ourselves the management.
The management. I love it.
Perfect.